Manager.
Morning, sir.
What you got for us today?
We have five items. Kate is going to get up and talk us through the new website design. That will take just a few minutes. Then Fred Gassert is here from Lake Afton to give us an observatory update. We'll do a quick agenda review. Sheena's going to talk us about success factors for just a bit, and Bam will give us some community information. So, just a few items, nothing too long, but work to do. Sound good? Morning, Kate.
Good morning. Okay, so when you go to our website, sedgwickcounty.org, here's our homepage. And for anyone who's interested in finding our meeting minutes, agendas, or videos, it's kind of a lengthy process. You go down to Commissioners, and then Commission Meetings, click again for View Meetings and Agendas, and then you click again, and we finally get to the page we're going to. So it's fairly intensive for someone who's used to one click and boom, you're there. So what we're changing, and this is still a test environment, we will have this modified along with, you know, the on-base change. For once it hits Commission Meetings, it will direct you to this new page where it has all the information, where you can find the Commission Meetings broadcast on city channels, you can find us on our YouTube link, find the agendas online, and then here's a list of upcoming meetings, and then our archives will be down here. So for 2019, we'll have our regular meetings, and then, once we have everything migrated over, it will say Agenda, Minutes, and Video. So everything will be on one page, one click, easy for both internal and external users, and hopefully it's a lot nicer and more friendlier. And that's the only presentation or the only talking points I have.
Can you scroll up? You also link to, what's the other, Bell Air?
Yeah, so our meetings are rebroadcast every day at 5:00 PM on Bell Air, City Channel 7, rebroadcast in Derby, and then the City of Wichita rebroadcasts as well.
Every day?
Yep.
So we walk this through one more time? So you have to, I mean, if you're like going to the homepage.
So if we're at the homepage, like the traditional, it would just be, this would turn into this page. So it's just the one click.
Well, you gotta go back home. You gotta go back.
Commission Meetings.
And then we'll be just off.
Yep. So, one of our IT specialists, she has a three-click rule, and so we're working towards making everything more faster and getting rid of some unnecessary clicks.
But to see the current meeting, you've got to go down to the bottom, and you've got to click on something to get to the current meeting?
Currently, yeah, it's several clicks away. And then, for the new platform that we're going towards, it's scrolling, and then you would have it here.
But if they're going to a meeting page, why wouldn't you make it above the fold instead of having to scroll down?
We can work to, can we transfer that up?
Sure.
We'll talk to Chantel.
Anything else, Kate?
That's all I have.
Well, we all worked on that, besides IT.
It was predominantly IT, and then us and Communications.
Very good. We'll tell you folks good work.
Fred?
Thank you, Harold. Sir. I'm Fred. My name's Fred Gassert. I'm Chairman of the Board of the Lake Afton Public Observatory. A little background on me, I'm a Business Honor. I've been an elevator contractor since 1983, have my own business, and I'm an amateur astronomer. And as an amateur astronomer, served multiple terms as President of the Local Astronomy Club, the Kansas Astronomical Observers. I've built my own telescopes, I've done a lot of outreach, I've done a lot of observing. I'm actually a Master Observer with Astronomical League. And as you'll see, when WSU decided to vacate the observatory, we kind of jumped in. So this is kind of the story of what happened, what we're doing now, and what we look to do in the future. So, as you know, the observatory was built in 1980. It was paid for by Cedric County, City of Wichita, WSU, and, well, actually Cedric County and WS, or City of Wichita paid for it, and WSU and USD 259 operated it. And that went that way for a number of years. City of Wichita got out, I think after a couple of years, and then after about 10 or 15 years, the school system decided they weren't going to be involved anymore. So it was just WSU operating it along with the, along with the county. In 2015, WSU decided, they didn't want to do it anymore. They had their reasons, they had a lot invested in it, and they wanted to use their funds somewhere else. So they decided in August of 2015 to close. So like I said, the Kansas Astronomical Observers met out there. At that time, I was the President of the club, and we decided we wanted to try to find a way to keep it open or reopen it. And we joined with a group called Open Wichita, which I just found out yesterday isn't around anymore, but they were there long enough to get us going. They helped us with some technical things to help set up and make sure we had what we needed to do. So we set up an exploratory team, educators, volunteers, people from the astronomy club, and from the observatory itself, and decided we had enough volunteers to maybe make this work. So, and we had, we found out that the observatory was already a 501(c)(3). Really simple process to transfer ownership was just to change the names on the paperwork. But we had to convince people that we could do it. So the directors at that time were representing each one of the four original groups. The building was owned by, is owned by Cedric County, and at that time, the telescope was owned by Wichita State. So it was our job to convince Wichita State that we could do good with their telescope and with their program that they had, and we had to convince the county that we had the manpower to be able to operate it. Then we had to convince the county, the WSU was with us, and we had to convince WSU that the county was with us. So this process took a little while. I kept saying we were going to notice something next Thursday, and almost a year later, we had the transfers completed. The WSU transferred the telescope to the 501(c)(3), and the new board members were set. And so, at that point, we had, we had control of the 501(c)(3). In July of 2016, we got a lease with the county, agreed upon to take over the operations of the observatory, and that's when we got the keys. Keep in mind, it's July 6th of 2016. We opened up that Labor Day. So just a little over a month, a little over a month after that, we opened up and made a lot of changes to the, to it. The first weekend, we had 625 visitors, which kind of kept going with what WSU had had when they closed. We had a lot of interest, but at that point, we had people think that was only three days we were going to be open. So they tried to make sure they were going to come out and not miss it. Like I said, we've made a lot of changes, and I'll kind of go through some of them. In the lobby, there was a mural on the wall of, an abstract mural of the Orion Nebula. We've painted over that, much to the chagrin of some of our volunteers, but we added a couple of monitors and kind of spruced it up. We got a Lake Afton, new Lake Afton logo, designed by somebody from Open Wichita and donated to us, and so that helped us get off the ground. We changed the way the lobby is set up with a new cashier stand, and we've got some more changes we're going to make there. We do have things for sale now, t-shirts, pens, pencils, light keychains and lights. Exhibit area, one of the things we noticed was that it was too bright. The white light really affects your night vision, so if you come in and then you went back outside, you couldn't see to walk. If you went into the observing room, you couldn't see the tele, you couldn't see to get in there to where the telescope was. So we put these diffusers over the light fixtures and really knocked the light down. It's only bright because the camera made it brighter. So we changed some of, modified some of the displays, making them so they didn't take up as much space, and a little more portable if we needed to move things to use the room for something else. This is one fun with light. We cleaned up some of the existing exhibits, repainting them, re, just making them look a little, look a little fresher, and made some new programs that operate with those. Some of the things we left alone, the Starlight Room has some exhibits that are pretty good science exhibits, and wasn't any reason to change them, so we left them the way they This was our original attempt at a computer center, and this is the new one. The, had a, somebody donated, built it and donated it, and it's got four computers in it, and we run, the kids can, there's different games that they can play on, and different astronomy programs that they can run. We've got virtual reality headsets. The three gray things there are, what do they call it, the plastic stuff, 3D printing. One of our, one of the local businesses donated those to us. One of them's the moon, and then some samples of crater and the front side and the back side of the moon. It's kind of cool to be able to touch and feel the difference in the topography of the moon. One of our volunteers built both of these displays. One in a million, the tub there has one million white pellets in it and one black one. And you roll it till you find the black one, and kind of gives you the idea of what a million, a million of something is. So when you're looking at stars, when you're looking at galaxies, what does that really mean? And then we've got a couple of kiosk displays that have, that we have computer programs and stuff on that people can walk up and use. Telescope Room. One of the things we did, something you probably don't notice, is when we got it, the dome would get stuck. It would rotate about a third of the way around, and we had to climb up on a ladder and pull on it while somebody was running it. And it was kind of dangerous, but we got through it. But when we updated it, we added a second motor to the, to the opposite side of the room and changed the wheels on it, kind of re-engineered it. And considering I'm not an engineer, it was kind of a feat that I'm kind of proud of that we got it to work. But we updated that, and that works really good now. The telescope, when we got it, was running on DOS. Took the term "open box computer" to a new level. It was on three shelves of a cabinet and had some high-powered power supplies to run the telescope. We now run it with one USB cable from a computer, operating with the current Windows structure, and we can do anything we want to with it. We can actually run it from a cellphone if we wanted to. So we've made some, made some major changes. It took $6,000 in donations to do that. Fortunately, we had three people that were willing to cough up that kind of money, and we got it done about four months after we opened up. And that's one of the biggest improvements that we've made. We had a donor, one of our members donated a six-inch Land Apuramatic refractor. That's the white tube. The black tube was what they used for a finder scope originally, and we can use it for photography program and for wide-field viewing. It's a really nice scope. It's ours until we don't need it anymore, and then he wants it back. So, but he needed a place to put it, so we put it on our telescope. Telescope controls, like I said, we were running on DOS. We had one monitor in there, and now we've got a bank of four monitors that show what the telescope's doing, what the telescope's looking at, and we can actually project pictures of whatever we are looking at, not only on that set of monitors, but on two other, two other monitors in the building. So lets people know what's going on in the room. Built an activity table. These activities change as we, as we progress. We've got a lot of different things we can do with it. The one right there in the front, the black one, is actually a black hole. You put a weight in the middle of it, and then you spin the marble around, and it kind of gives you the idea of what a black hole actually is doing. But those activities, we change, and we have the ability to do a lot of different things with that. And again, that was built with donated money. Science Education Center, in lieu of us giving them advertising, gave us four new binoculars, and we updated our binocular box that's outside, is allow you to look at the night sky with binoculars every time you come out. They're always there. And then Celestron donated four new 60-millimeter refractors that we use on our mounts outside, and they can use, they can look at the sky, look at the moon, or they can look at, we've got an artificial sky set up out there that they can use. So it gives them the idea of how telescope works and how to use a telescope. So, next step is we need, we need ideas from everybody, and we get those all the time. So if anybody thinks they want, would like to see us do something, they can sure let us know. Some of the ideas we have, take it back, I'm going to go back and show you the, how we're doing. This is a sample of 2018. We were open, we're open Friday and Saturday night, every Friday and Saturday night for the public, and then we also have events during the week. Eighty-two percent of our income comes on Friday, in 2018, came on a Friday or Saturday night. Astro Fest was a special event that we have, we had last year, and we're going to have this year, August 10th. Made up 15% of our, of our, of our income. And then special events, the events during the week, made up about 3% of our income. And that's, that's, we're getting a little higher percentage on that now. So, by category, we get, about 80% of our money comes from just people walking through the door. 11% comes from merchandise sales, and we sell about 8% on memberships, and then we do get donations out there. We've got a donation box. We also get donations direct, get them on the website, we get them off of Facebook. So the donations are quite a bit more than that. Attendance, attendance by event. Again, most of our people come in on Friday and Saturday night. We have 7% on special events, Monday through, Monday, or Sunday through Thursday, and then Astro Fest made up about 17% of our, of our attendance. People that come out, 65% of them are adults, 28% are school-aged kids, seniors make up 4%, and then the free children make up 3%. So people come out, they can bring their, bring all of them and enjoy the, enjoy the facility. On the expense side, we, we spend 37% on office, 20% on exhibits, about 16% on merchandise, and of course, that's an ongoing, an ongoing thing. Astro Fest made up about 10% of our, of our expenses. We had some expenses on the building that we weren't anticipating. We had to replace a blower motor, and so our building expenses were a little higher than expected at 10%. And then we have some other expenses that make up about 7%. Upcoming events, July 20th, we're going to celebrate the Apollo 11 moon landing, and of course, there's quite a few, few moon landings after that that we're going to take care of. August 10th is Astro Fest number two. It runs from 4:00 to midnight. We'll have outside displays, activities for everybody to do, activities inside the building. We'll have solar viewing during the day, and look at the moon and Jupiter and Saturn at night, and have a photo contest, or photo opportunity with the telescopes, as well as the Star Wars reenactors are going to be out there again this year. So that was a big hit last year. Some of the new projects we've got, we need to put some electrical outlets in the, in the display area. It'd be nice if I could find an electrician that would like to do some work for nothing. I know, I've been told I don't have to necessarily pull permits, but I need to make sure it's right. So that's one, that's one thing I need to tell in the display area. We're going to re-rub the shed. I think we can get the shingles for nothing. We had a contractor that offered to do it for nothing, and his offer was $1,800, and I didn't really understand the nothing part there, but, and we want to repaint the shed, and they wanted to re-site it for free, $3,500 or $3,800. Again, I didn't understand the free part where that all worked out, but I was talking, and I think the county's got some paint that we can get for free, and I've got volunteers lined up, so hopefully we'll have that, have that all done before the August 10th event, maybe even before the July 20th event. So we're going to get on that. Wanted to add some red lighting to the LAPO sign on the outside. We did clean up the outside. You guys came out and removed a tree, some trees for us from the front of the building, cleaned it up pretty good, and we need to, we just want to put some, some red light on that sign so it shows up a little better. That's going to cost about $1,000 for us to do that. We've got the money, I just need to get the electrician and get things going on that. Then I've got a folding fence we're going to put on the northwest corner of the, of the facility. It's something I'm donating. It's actually trash from a job that I did, but it's good material, and we're going to make a metal frame that folds out this way. It'll, it'll store up against the building and come out, and it'll have a tarp on it, and basically it'll block the lights when the cars come in off of MacArthur Road. They shine out on our observing pad real bad. So this will block that, block that light. We can put it out whenever we need it, when they need to mow or whatever, it's going to be, it's going to be tucked out of the way, and it'll, and it'll look nice. And then we need to clean the shed out, get rid of some of the trash that's in there. We've got some display material that we could probably sell. We just need to, we need to get on, we need to get on that as well. Got a memorial donation in the works, the Robert Larson Estate. He, he said, instead of giving flowers, he said, "I want you to give to Lake Afton." Right now, it stands at $1,440, and we're going to, if you, if you've ever been out to the observatory, when you go from the main exhibit area to the telescope room, there's a little area we call the light trap. And the idea is when you go in there, you get acclimated, dark acclimated, so when you go in, you can use the scope, and you can actually see what you need to see. Well, right now, they're using transparency photographs that are very expensive to duplicate and very difficult to take care of. Takes about two and a half hours to change out the display if we want to. So what we're going to do is we're going to put, we're going to replace those with four TV monitors and program them with a new computer so that we can display the pictures or display whatever we want to display. We've got Newman University has got some, some people there that are going to, they're going to help us with the programming part of it, and we're hoping to get that, we're hoping to get that off and running here in the next, the next couple of months. We've got a grant request. We've put into Spirit Arrow Systems for some new computers. The computers at our computer station were donated. They're, they were okay when we put them in, but they're, we need, the monitors are deteriorating, and we've got one computer that's not, not playing like it's supposed to, and we need, we've decided, we've got the concept down, we know what we want to do with it, now let's do it, and if we're going to do it, we might as well do it the right way. So we're looking to do that. We'll repurpose a couple of the old computers, one to run the main monitor in the observing, the exhibit area, and then one just to be an office computer. The one we've got in the office now is running on Windows XP. Makes it kind of hard to do stuff. We've upgraded our membership card making, so we can make them in-house. If you come in and buy a membership, you'll get it before you leave, whereas before, it might take, it might take a month or two for us to get it to you. We're updating our square system that we use to include all of the inventory and making it so that the accounting is a lot easier to handle. When, when you guys come out, we go through the process, we know how many, we'll know how many people come, we know what we've done, what we've sold. If we need to buy more shirts, we know what, we know what shirts to buy. So that's all stuff that's in the, in the current plans. On that one, we found out, I donated a iPad, and my iPad is one decimal point off of being one that will work with a chip reader. So we're going to probably have to buy us, buy us a new iPad to make that work. So, the things you learn when you're, when you're working with stuff that you're not familiar with. One other thing, if you're, if you're a computer geek, we're working on an API. It's a data source where you can get information. I don't understand how it all works, but basically, some websites, if you see a website that has like a weather, a weather app on it, it's, they're, they're going somewhere else to get that, and that's, we're hoping that people will come to us to get their information. Right now, we have what you see up there, you know, what's up, Moon Info and the Sun and whatnot. We're working on developing, developing that, and hopefully at some point, we'll be able to sell it like they do, like a lot of the other apps do. And it's a, hopefully it'll become a fundraiser for the, for the observatory as well. That's pretty much it. Invite everybody to come out. We do give county employees a discount of $1 if you do come out, so the, would like to see you come out. Any questions?
Questions?
Just more of a comment. Just want to say thank you for all you do there. This was, I think, very, you know, the community wanted to keep it in 2016, it was threatened to go away, and somehow partnerships and a lot of involvement by a lot of volunteers it endured, and I'm so thankful that it's there. And I think in terms of quality of life, I am very happy that this is still a thing for this community. And looks to me like your business model works. Your numbers look like, there's not a lot of extra money there, but it looks like it, it looks like it is sustainable. So, as far as I can tell, it looks like it'll be here for a long time, and I'm very happy about that. So thank you for all you do.
As I can.
Any other questions? I want to thank you and Harold and all the rest of the board for what you do out there to keep that running.
Okay.
We appreciate it. I'm on the board now, so I do attend your meetings. I come back and tell Tim what you all need and see if we can help out there.
Got that tree down in two days, so.
Very good.
Okay.
Thanks for the update. We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
I will go take a quick look at the May 8th agenda. We should have one in front of you. Kate, do we have anything at the beginning of the meeting that you know of at this time?
We will talk about Teen Pregnancy Month and Mental Labor Workers Month.
There's three proclamations following National Bike Month. The fact that we are a census partner for the 2020 Census and its Corrections Officer Week will all be notated by proclamation. Items G through K are all appointments for resignations in individual commission districts. And then, new business, item L, Denise Sherman will come in and talk about PKM and give us an update on operations and budget and some other items. Item M will be pulled, that is actually going to be a grant that we can approve at manager levels, so that will not be on the agenda for the May 8th meeting. Item N is a grant for the Regional Forensics Science Center, which Dr. Stedman will be here to discuss. Item O is a property tax relief case that I think Justin has walked the halls on and talked with you about already. And then items P, Q, and S are building code adoptions. P is the water well code, Q is the IBC, and S is the IEBC. And in the middle of that, we sandwiched Rick Durham with the Capitol Report. I think we'll probably make that where Chris Labrum can just keep the podium, and we'll exchange R and S. And then Board of Bids and Contracts, and on consent is pretty much public works and planning items, easements and plaques and et cetera. Item X is a resolution amending a few county policies, which you will get a draft of. And I think, Sheena, will we walk the halls on that? Yeah, we'll see between now and next Wednesday. Yeah, we'll see between now and next Wednesday, and talk to you about the policy charter. Other than that, the next Wednesday, there is a fire agenda, but it's just minutes approval on.
Any questions?
Any questions? Sheena, can you tell us about success factors?
Yes, we did go live yesterday at the meeting. There have been some projects that I have for working on with HRE partners. That site is still live, and we still have some job searches there. They are either closing, some of them closed last night at midnight, or they're closing today. And the reason that those are still open is we have applicants that apply for those jobs. So as opposed to closing the job out and reopening it on success factors and making them apply again, we'll let that job opening run its cycle on HRE partners and open up review the handles there. There are some continuous openings on HRE partners, and we will close theirs out and open them on success factors, such as petition that we did pay for a higher term for it. But we are actively posting on success factors now. They are going live. I checked it last night, we have two postings from there that are, are being sent out. So it is, it is a, they are two different systems, so we did not, we're not able to pick up information on HRE partner and settle back to success factors. What success factors, that is determined by the department, so they have to initiate that job opening, and it has to go through the process of approval before it is posted.
Good. Questions? Well, Tom mentioned to me this morning that you have to re-input everything. I went on the website yesterday to see what kinda openings we had, and the Appraiser Office has an opening, and it didn't matter where you clicked, you got the Appraiser Office opening, but that was the only one I was finding.
Really pushing that position.
There will be more, there will be more applicant pools, that is already HRE partners.
Good. All right. I forgot to mention on your fire agenda next week, I didn't mean to diss him, but Chief Williams' contract approval is on that too, or his, his agreement, so that is the one item that you'll have to approve that is germane, so the rest of it, the rest of it is per country, the chief is not.
That's pretty important.
Yep. Any questions on success factors?
Anything?
Van?
Okay, three things. The county will have a booth at two popular weekend events. Cinco de Mayo on Saturday and Open Streets ICT on Sunday. We'll have nine-one-one and corrections at Cinco de Mayo, and county communications will be at Open Streets ICT. We'll have, we'll pass out information giveaways and promote the jobs through career science. Also, pleased to announce, we finally have a date for the law enforcement training center dedication. That's gonna be June thirteenth at three-thirty, so mark your calendars, and we'll provide remarks for people who speak to you. And I should point out that Kate Playwood forgot to mention one thing, today is her birthday.
Twenty-one, by the way, okay. We're legal.
We got a donor to the office if you all wanna come by and visit.
Good. What else you have, Mr. Van?
I believe all we have.
Very good. Commissioners, what you have this morning? I just have two things, then, if none of the commissioners have anything. First of all, I think several of us are going to learn to be firemen for the day on Saturday, so hopefully, they ask for all kinds of medical information. I'm hoping they keep me alive during the event, but I don't. Commissioner Cruz, you gonna go do that Saturday morning?
I am.
Very good. Commissioner O'Donnell, I think you.
I'm doing the Republican woman.
Oh, you're doing that? Okay. Very good. Anyway, I guess just Commissioner Cruz and I are gonna learn to be firemen Saturday morning, so if anyone wants to come out, and especially EMS, they're certainly invited out there.
I am invited.
Anyway, that's one thing coming up. The other thing I wanna talk about, where the, I can speak with all the commissioners at one time, is last week I had a meeting on EMCU, the deployed missing child unit. And so, one of the things that I brought up, excuse me, during that meeting was something that I talked about last time that we had a staff meeting, and that's, that we're having a number of children that are being killed by people that should be taking care of them instead of, of injuring them. And I, I wanted to know what we could do here, and the nice thing about it, in that room, we had a local head of the DCF office here, we had a representative from the sheriff's office, we had a representative from the police department, the DA was there. And one thing that I learned during that meeting is that DCF has a couple different databases, one they call KIDS and one they call KIPS. But evidently, that KIPS database is the one that they mentioned, is if we could tap into that and get one piece of information out of that, now all we need is one piece of information, and that's whether or not that there's been contact either at that office or with the, the name of the individual, that we could provide to nine-one-one, so that when nine-one-one sends out a call to dispatch a police officer or the sheriff's officer to a location, if we could give them some kind of a signal that says that there was something happening at that in the past, that DCF has had contact at that address or DCF has had contact with that name of that individual, then the officers that appear at the scene can say, "Hey, can we check on the welfare of the children that are at that unit?" Now, it's gonna require something from the state to be able to do that, because they, we need to interface our computer-aided dispatch information with this other system to get just one piece of information. We don't need everything that's in their database. We just need to know one thing, was there something going on there that we need to check on the welfare of the, of the child?
Or something, like your case.
So, if, if you looked at the news recently, there was numerous nine-one-one calls to the location of the last death. And luckily, on that last, well, probably not luckily, on that last day, when we found the one child dead, if the officers had not have asked to place eyes on their children, first of all, they wouldn't have found that one was dead, second of all, they would not have been able to save the second child. That second child is only alive because the officers took the initiative to say, "Can we see the children?" That's what we need, is we need to have our officers have the ability to say that. Can we see the children? So what my suggestion is, and I'm doing this in an open meeting so that we can discuss it, is I'd like to send a letter to the governor and possibly the leadership in the House and the Senate and say, "What can you do to get DCF to work with our nine-one-one system so that we can have a signal of some sort sent out, so that we can identify that there may be a problem possibly, or just check on the child's welfare?" So, I guess I need, the other commissioners, I know this isn't a formal meeting, but I'm asking for the letter, do you have any objection to us as a commission sending out a letter to the governor and the leadership of, of the House and Senate saying, "We need some coordination with DCF to get something in place"? We need to. Any problem with that at all?
Well, I'm kinda familiar with, some of these agencies, government agencies are very protective of their data, especially the, you know, personnel matters. So I think we need to word it something that maybe have IT help us, but really, I think what we wanna have is a query. We don't really have access into their system.
No, we don't.
We should be able to query to, to dip it, just yes or no, but we oughta get the language.
Yeah, we can help with that.
So we make it as, as, just a query, your data is protected. We don't, we don't want anything, you know, all of the, you know, PII information and all that stuff is still, it's that, it's their stuff, 'cause they're gonna be very protective of their.
I agree.
And not, they're not gonna be all up for it unless we make it sound as neutral and as minimal and as.
That's why I was saying, we only need one piece of information, was there something happening with that name or that address? We don't want anything else. We don't wanna compromise their database, we don't want any other access, and it may need to be a two-way street, because if the officers see something that needs to report it back to DCF, I don't, we may need some kind of interface going back to make sure that we say that everything is good or there are problems there, so. If, if there's no objections, I'll have, ask the manager to start working with the folks to get a letter put together for us that, that we could sign out.
I, I have no objections to the, to the idea. I, I guess I'm looking at the issue and say, we ought, do we really understand exactly where the barrier is? Is it DCF that's, that's, that has the information that we need? That's, that's the part that we don't have access to. Obviously, our judicial system vests feed information into DCF, they're very closely connected, and I don't know, I don't know, I'm not personally aware of exactly where, you know, who has access to what information right now, where the barrier is. I guess I'd like to say, it'd be nice to maybe talk to some of the folks within the county and find out if we really understand exactly where the barrier is as a starting point, so we know what we're asking for. I mean, I don't wanna approach the state with a, with a request if, if our, if our request doesn't make sense to them. So I guess I'd like to understand it deeply as to where is the barrier that's causing this to happen at this point.
Well, I'm not, no, I don't, it's not a barrier, it's just that right now, we're not transferring information that may be needed by that officer when they arrive, and so I, I don't know if I'd call it a barrier. When I talked to the local head of the DCF here, he said there are two systems, one's called KIDS and one's called KIPS, KIDS and KIPS. He said the KIDS system really isn't very up to date, so there were some problems there. The KIPS system, he indicated, may have the information that we need, and he didn't see that, that was a barrier, other than we would have to work through the state in order to be able to get access to the little portion of data and make sure that there's some kind of firewall, so that we only get the piece of information that we need.
Okay. Well, I'm certainly supportive of, of writing the letter, just wanna, just wanna make sure that when we approach the state, it comes from a position of knowledge that we understand exactly what we're really asking for, that's all.
Very good.
I'm supportive of it too. I just wanna bring up though, you know, when, and Jim, maybe you have, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the CJCC meeting last week, you know, they talked about that drugs is, is really an issue, and I know this case in particular, meth was involved, and so I wonder, you know, the correlation between using drugs and is, I mean, could that have been prevented? If this woman, if these people would have been off drugs, would they have been better parents? I don't know. But I think we do have to talk about our drug addiction problem, our recidivism rate in our jails. I mean, that, to me, the DA last week was like, it was, it's all about drugs. It's all about people not being able to get the help that they need, and we have all these issues related to addiction. And so, I, I love the fact that you thought of this, I love that we, we would send something to our state to talk about this, but I think we have to, we have to, in addition to this letter, talk about what is best for our mental health problem here. We've talked about a mental health facility, but is an addiction treatment center something that maybe is, is more feasible? Or, you know, I, I don't know what it is, but are we tackling the real issues? And to me, it was all about drugs and addiction. So that's something that I would like to discuss in addition to what we're talking about now.
I, I do remember when I was there, we had some legislation, and I don't know exactly how it turned out, but I'm sure someone in the room probably does know. But there was a while there where, when that, when the police officer came across someone who in, in the community they thought was potentially had, had a history of mental illness, and they, maybe they weren't personally aware of it, but they suspected maybe this was a, a chronic issue, that they were able to, there was information in the nine-one-one system that would let them know that we've had this person in the system before. In other words, a little bit of history was available at the nine-one-one system that would allow that police officer to take them for treatment rather than to the jail. It was some front-end, in, 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 front-end information, had to be, I think HIPAA was an issue. But anyway, we did pass legislation, I believe, that allowed some type of collection of data and transmittal of information from nine-one-one back to the LEO, so he would know some of the history of this person. This reminds me of that. So I think the, the issue is between the drug addiction, drug abuse issues and the mental health. If there's children involved in some of those cases, that's what I think you're asking for, is, is how does that connect to the other history we already have that may be related to mental health and, and substance abuse that may impact those children and the wel, and the welfare of those children? I think it's all, it's all intermingled, and it's hard to put your finger on exactly what, you know, where is the information we need, but I think all of it's relevant.
I agree with Commissioner Cruz. If you look at our legislative agenda this year, the number one item on our legislative agenda was behavioral health, and that takes in the gamut between mental health issues, drug and alcohol abuse, homelessness and so forth. We didn't get very far this year on our number one item on our legislative agenda. Hopefully, our legislature next year can take a look at it and see what kind of concerns we really do have there. This is a huge county. We have a huge amount of our leadership and the legislature is from this area, so I'm hoping that we can get the word across to them next year that we need to take care of something on behavioral health.
Just one comment. Law enforcement has the ability to flag addresses and people with certain codes. We do it for gang members, we do it for suicidals, we do it for mentals. This is now, the, the thing that's different about what you're suggesting here is, we, we flag that, all of this historical categories based on actual events, in other words, we have contact with suicidal people, so then that address becomes flagged as signal four in the system. The gang flagging has, goes through a series of steps, and a person is given that status, not lightly, but law enforcement, the burden is on them to show categories of why they are gang members. This is different though, because you want proactively an address for people flagged with a DCF connotation, and in other words, they're a customer or client of DCF, which would be a little bit different for this strategy than what we, how we code or signal other categories of people. So, I don't know if there's roadblocks as much as there are just things we'll have to work through from the state side, from a Laura's side with CAD, and then figuring how to get that transmitted out to, to the police officers that need it in our hands. So we'll, we'll craft the letter with those kinds of outlines in mind and get it sent, or have you sent it, signed it?
That's encouraging to know that there's already various.
There is a system.
Flags out here for other things, and you think, can we just add one more?
Add one more.
Flag, so to speak. Good. And during the EMCU meeting, I learned about these flags, the sheriff's office and the police department are the ones that, this is not an original idea from David Dennis, trust me, I.
It is original on DCF.
There were some very smart people in the room that worked at stuff every day that said there are flags in place and maybe we can interface.
I mean, we, Laura has the capacity now, if we make a call at an address and it comes to the officer's attention that they're DCF clients, we can enter that in and flag that. You're talking about a system though that would proactively grab that piece of data from the state so that we don't have to wait for historicals. And people change addresses all the time, and it's where, you know, it, it's sometimes it's better to have it flagged with the person than it is with the address, so. We'll, we'll craft the letter and get the ball rolling.
Are officers trained to ask if there are children in the home?
Not on a, I mean, on a family, this depends on type of call, but you would clearly flag, I mean, if I'm an officer going to a family disturbance, for example, I'm gonna ask that question. And it depends on the type of call, but not routinely, no, not on burglary reports or type of criminal reports, they're, if it's.
Maybe they should.
And they do. If you walk into a house and it's in disarray and, and messy and, and you see evidence of kids, a lot of times the officers will ask to see, get their eyes on the kids, which is probably what happened down in this case. It was just in such disarray that a normal, reasonable person would say, "Let me see your kids," so.
Sorry? Okay. All right. Anything else from the commissioners? Anything from staff? Mr. Spears?
We have tire wound up. We'll give a report on that after we get all the facts in. We know how many cars came, but we don't know how many tires. The vendor's picking up the tires and counting them, so as soon as we get everything, we'll give you a report on that before a commission meeting or something.
Good. And we're gonna show the video that Tony shot overhead?
I think so.
Good.
You did a great job on it.
Yeah, all right.
What's it done with the tires?
Then it takes them and shrims them up, and it gets, it still melts out of them, and then they try to recycle the roads and different things, like playgrounds. You can also use it for asphalt. You can help it, for certain, certain companies use it for that.
Isn't that your favorite tire road? No?
Yes. Well, that's a lot, that's another.
Maybe he told me that.
Well, good. Well, this vendor that's hauling rocks, hauling it up to Kansas City, from where I understand, they're out of the Kansas City area, so.
They've got a big machine out there, picking them up, putting them in there, trucking, haul them off, and count them everywhere they go. Still has, a lot of tires.
There was a lot of tires. I was amazed at it. Very good. Any other staff have anything this morning? this morning?
Yes, just a reminder that this probably is the employee recognition ceremony at 2:00.
Very good. Anything else from staff? Anyone, any of our electeds?
Mr. told that to me to talk about, we are having the annual conference for the Kansas Clerk's and Election Official Association here in Wichita, starting, the mic could be directly starting today. And we'll have around 200 clerks and election officials from across the state here in Wichita, where we will be learning all types of different themes about elections and having all kinds of fun, networking together. I did think it would be important to, pardon, but, Kelly's stopping, sorry. I did think it was also important for you to note that Friday afternoon, my chief deputy and I are leaving and going to Travis County, Texas. Saturday they have an election. They have been doing vote centers on Election Day for about 10 years. We will be observing that election, learning first best practice and bringing back a lot of documentation and things for us to learn from here. We're excited about that. Not looking forward to getting out of the driving, but we're excited about actually observing the election and watching how they've done this. Kind of also, kind of something that's interesting is they had called us because they just bought the equipment that we just rolled out in 17. So, they came to us looking for information. Now, we're coming to them looking for information. So, it's gonna be a great sharing back and forth of learning what they're about twice our size. Interestingly enough, they have about twice the number of polling places and they bought twice the amount of equipment. So, I'm feeling pretty good about our decisions here because they have this down. They have a lot of voters compared to us. So, we're very excited to learn from them and bring those best practices back and implement here when we're able to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Arnold, anything this morning?
Nope.
I guess we have nothing else. We'll adjourn. Thank y'all.